...project manager.
You could leave until it gets to high school.
I have my mentors in South High. They're beautiful.
She's a...
She's a...
She's got money.
My scope.
Yes.
The answer is yes.
Lady Grant.
Well, maybe the right person to be here. Don't have to worry about it.
It's not good.
Yes, I don't have a chromic up. And I trip me down a lot because of these cars. It's not.
Ready?
Yeah.
All right.
Good evening. An adequate notice has been given in accordance with the Sunshine Law. Notice was published on December thirteenth, two thousand and eighteen, in a local source, the official newspaper for the township of Springfield for the year two thousand and nineteen, and posted in the Annex Building on December fourteenth, two thousand and eighteen. Please join me in the pledge.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for its stand, one nation, indivisible, without any question of straw.
May we have a roll call?
Mr. Stephen Hochstein.
Here.
Ms. Jody Cohen is absent. Mr. Daniel Poltroff.
Here.
Mr. Mark Cunningham.
Here.
Mr. David Schnur.
Here.
Ms. Cara Greco.
Here.
Mr. John Sagalow.
Here.
Vice Chair Greg Roth.
Here.
Chairman Anthony Von Sekka.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. I'd like to ask for an approval of the minutes for March two thousand and nineteen. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll move to approve.
Steve Hochstein makes a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mark Cunningham seconds it. Are there any abstentions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, thank you. There are no resolutions. The first application we're going to hear is Application twenty nineteen dash five, Vanderson Afonso, one thirty-one, Box of Straw Way, Lot six oh four, Lot six. This is for a bulk variance for an addition. Are they present?
No.
No, they're the dirty people. Who's here? We had pop where...
All right. They'll go to the back of the...
They were here earlier.
The line. All right. As little of that will go here. Application twenty nineteen dash four, Dr. Sally Alkumari, four twenty Morris Avenue, Block one ten, Lot one. This has been carried for its preliminary and final site plan, use variance and bulk variance for X-ray technician school.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Evan Pickus. I'm an attorney with the law firm Pickus and Lansbury and Miss Brunswick, and I thank you all very much for your time this evening. I'm here tonight to represent GS Dental Academy and Dr. Sally Alkumari, seeking a use variance and a bulk variance for the establishment of a X-ray technician's school adjacent to her current dental office. The current dental office is located at four twenty Morris Avenue in Springfield. That's Lot one, Block one ten, and it's located in the O-zone. As I'm sure you're aware, the O-zone is specific for professional uses, medical uses, and private schools. It seems that one of the problems with this application earlier was that there's no specific granting for a person to use the property as a professional office and a private school at the same time, and that's the reason why a variance has been requested as far as the use is concerned. This is a continuation of prior application, and I will not bore you wholly with these details again, but I would like to make a couple of comments. I understand that at the first presentation, one of the issues that arose had to do with parking and traffic flow. We've tried to ameliorate those circumstances. I have with me tonight the traffic study expert who's going to present testimony and explain to you the parking circumstances and explain to you the traffic circumstances and help you reach a level of comfort where you'll be able to hopefully grant this bulk variance with respect to the parking so that that's not an impediment to the application. And finally, with respect to the other uses as I described shortly ago, I've brought with me a planner this evening, and the planner is going to provide testimony for you to describe how this use would affect the property, how this use would affect the area, provide you a testimony regarding positive and negative criteria. When that testimony's through, we will certainly be happy to answer any questions that you have tonight. Any questions at this point, ladies and gentlemen? Okay, great. So first, what I'd like to do is I'd like to bring up our planner. I'm sorry, how do you prefer? Would you prefer he sit there or stand here? Do you have a preference?
No.
Um, I prefer that he speak into a microphone so that he can be recorded.
You'd rather sit?
So he can sit or he can stand. There's a microphone that'll label him to move around a little bit.
While Mr. Lieber's getting established, I just want to bring you one more point. This is not an application for a fly-by-night school where she's going to call herself a school and just, you know, have some... Dr. Alkumari has taken great steps to become certified, to become accredited. This will be a real school accredited by the state of New Jersey. And if I may, I'd like to pass to you folks a couple of documents here. I don't know if there were exhibits provided last time, if you'd just... I don't know how you want me to mark this.
I don't believe we marked any exhibits last time, so...
So this is exhibit one.
Thank you.
Just tell you briefly what you've got.
Just wait until you're back at the mic to speak, so...
Thank you. Let me just tell you what you've got in front of you real quickly. The first document...
I'm sorry, just for the record, we're going to mark this as A1.
A1.
Applicant one, yeah.
Thank you, sir. So what you have in front of you is a bunch of documents stapled together, which we call our accreditation packet, okay? The first two pages are a letter from the state of New Jersey, Department of Environmental Protection, but it's really from the Radiological Technical Board of Examiners, which took an application from Dr. Alkumari, wanted to see what she wanted to do. They had a meeting of their board, and on July eighteenth, they approved Dr. Alkumari's program to teach dental radiography and gave her an official identification number that the state provides to the schools of this sort. The next page is a list of... A list of schools that provide this type of education, and at the bottom, it looks like the state has given them an official registration number, two one seven two. The next two pages that you have are a letter from the New Jersey Department of Labor and Workforce Development, okay, which is basically where the Commissioner of Education operates through, and they have accredited Dr. Alkumari's program in accordance with the packet that she provided to them as a formal school for teaching dental radiology. The next page is a certificate from the Department of Education, Department of Labor and Workforce, which says, "This is to certify that GS Dental Academy has hereby granted the certificate of approval to operate a private career school at four twenty Morris Avenue, Springfield, New Jersey, for the purpose of providing instruction in all approved close secondary programs offered this facility. This certificate is issued in accordance with the regulations pursuant to New Jersey." So not to beat it over the head, my point in giving you this... You folks these documents is to express to you that this isn't just some fly-by-night kind of thing. Dr. Alkumari has done her homework. She's made her applications to the state. She's become registered. She's become certified, and she's become accredited. So at this point, what I'd like to do is I'd like to bring some testimony from Mr. Lieber, who is our planner, and if I can swear him in, please?
Please raise your right hand. Do you swear the testimony you will give will be the truth?
Yes, I do.
Please state your name and your address.
Mark with a C. Last name is Lieber, L.E.B.E.R., and I'm with the firm East Point Engineering. Our office is at eleven South Main Street in Marlborough.
Mr. Lieber, could you basically... Could you please tell us what your... What degrees you hold?
Yes. I have a bachelor's science degree in civil engineering from Drexel University. Following graduation, I went on to obtain a master's in business administration from the Rutgers Graduate School of Management. I am licensed in the state as a professional engineer, professional planner, and I have a certificate, Certified Municipal Engineering Certificate. I have testified before both planning and zoning boards all over the state of New Jersey, primarily, I would say, Ocean County in north.
Mr. Chairman, I'd ask that Mr. Lieber be admitted as an expert for testimony personally.
Are your licenses in effect as of today?
Yes, they are.
Okay, we can accept this.
If I might, just to be clear, you're offering him as a expert in planning?
That's correct. All right, Mr. Lieber, did you have a chance to review the application and documentation that provided you in connection with Dr. Alkumari's application?
Yes, I have.
And do you have comments or descriptions of the documentation to the board?
I do, and I have a handout I'd like to pass out at this point. It's a series of four color photographs, and these were taken about a month ago, and I'm going to refer to these during my testimony.
Well, as you mark, this is A2.
This is sixteen. Okay, so in order to address the planning aspects of the case, I actually want to reintroduce you to this property, and then I want to review the photos that I took. After that, I'm going to describe the proposed use in great detail, and I'm going to discuss why a variance is needed. Then we're going to go over the purpose of zoning and finally discuss the positives and the negatives of the application, but if you have any questions at any point, just feel free to interrupt me. So we'll start with the beginning, which, and I understand there was testimony previously given, but Dr. Alkumari owns GS Dental since two thousand and thirteen. The office is located at four twenty Morris Avenue, and that's otherwise known as Block one ten, Lot one. It's a property that's situated in the O-office zone district, and the block contains approximately point four eight acres. The lot's a corner lot. It's in a very unusual location. It's actually where Morrison Road and Morris Avenue come together, that's the corner of Marcy Avenue, and there's two separate access points. There is an access of Morris Avenue where there's five parking spaces, and there's a secondary access of a Marcy Avenue where there's another fifteen parking spaces. On this property, and you'll see in these photos, is a one-and-a-half story building. It's about three thousand seven hundred and forty square feet, and it's multi-tenanted building. There's a dental office there, which belongs to the applicant. There is also a doctor's office and an accountant's office. Using rough square footages, it appears that the dental office is occupying about twelve hundred and ninety square feet. The doctor has about eight hundred and thirty square feet, and the accountant has about eight hundred and twenty square feet. There is a vacant portion in the building, which is along Marcy Avenue, and that's approximately eight hundred square feet. Now, the vacant portion is the portion of the building that is proposed to be utilized by the school that we are discussing tonight. If you look at the photos of the building, one of the things I want to point out is that each use has its own entrance or entry point. So if you look at the top photo on the left, just beyond the dumpster enclosure, you'll see a door. That's the door into the accountant's office. On the right of that photo, you'll see another door under overhang, which is the back of the dental office. Moving across to the top photo on the right, the first door on the left is not used. That actually goes into one of the dental rooms. You have the dental's main entrance next to the window where the light's on. On the bottom of the picture, you'll see a door in the center. That's the dentist's main office entrance, and then there's a glass door with a kind of diamond pattern in the front. That's the doctor's office main entrance. And then just off the edge of this photo to the right is the accountant's main entrance. On the last photo on the bottom, you'll see the covered overhang, and this is facing Marcy Avenue, so the proposed school entrance would be on the left under that covered overhang, and then there's a door with the address in the glass. That's a private entrance. That's not for the public use, but it also goes into the dental office. So to discuss the use, I just want to make clear that the GS Dental Academy is a fully state-accredited entity, and they propose to offer a four-month training program in X-ray instruction and operation. In this curriculum, they would have up to four students and one instructor, and the program has been approved and licensed by the Department of Environmental Protection, as you have that letter with you tonight, and also the New Jersey Department of Education and the New Jersey Department of Labor. The four-month curriculum is structured so that the first three months consist of mostly theory and educational portions, and the fourth month is actually a more practical, hands-on clinical rotation where the students would operate the equipment under the supervision of Dr. Alkumari in the dental office. Now, upon completion of this program, the students will be able to apply to take the New Jersey State X-ray exam. If they pass the exam, they'll be issued a state license to operate X-ray equipment in any dental office in the state of New Jersey. If you look at the hours of operation, presently, the dental office is open on the following days. So Monday, nine AM to six PM. Generally, the occupancy load in the office is one doctor, three staff, and they can accommodate up to three patients, so that would be seven people in the office.
Mark, my question.
Mm-hmm.
Excuse me, I'd just like to point out that if you look at the packet I handed you... If you look at the packet that I pointed... I handed you earlier, the last two pages have the operational schedule that Mr. Lieber's referring to.
Just for the record, that's part of A1.
Part of A1, correct. I'm sorry.
No problem. So, and I'm really reading off the top of this page. So Tuesday, the office is open from noon to seven PM, and it's the same people loading, seven people. Wednesday, the office is closed. Thursday, there's only one person in the office. That's an administrative day, no patients. On Friday, the office opens early at seven AM and it closes at two PM, and again, one doctor, three staff, and up to three patients. And finally, Saturday, nine AM to three PM, and Sunday, the office is closed. When you look at the dental school class schedule, it actually fits in perfectly with the dental office schedule because it's occurring on times that there's really no activity in the dental office. For example, on Wednesday, where there's a morning session and afternoon class, the dental office is closed, so there is no staff or patients on that day. On Thursday, there's a class, morning and afternoon, where the dental office is only utilized by one administrative staff member, so again, there's no overlap in occupancy loading either, as there are no patients being seen on Thursdays. Now, once the students reach the fourth month of the program, to avoid overlapping of staff assistants, the student would be able to assist the doctor in the dental practice, which would eliminate the need for a second assistant to be in the room. So there's a rotation of the students with the existing staff assistants so that there's not an overpopulation of assistants for one dentist. So again, there's really no conflict and there's really no overlap. Any questions on that? So why are we here? You know, what is the variance all about? And I reviewed the board planner's letter, which was dated March eighteenth, two thousand and nineteen, and it indicates that the introduction of this use as an additional principal use on the property would require a variance for multiple principal uses on the site. Now, I kind of looked at this both ways because I tend to lean more conservative when I do the planning analysis. So you could say that this is a fully accredited school licensed by the state of New Jersey, and it meets the definition of private school, but you could also say it's an X-ray training center. So if I search the Springfield Township ordinance for which zones permit an X-ray training center, there are none, probably because that use had never been thought of or developed when the ordinance was written. So therefore, specifically, an X-ray training center is not listed as a permitted use in the O-zone district. However, there is a distinction that I always make when I look at these types of planning issues in that an ordinance being silent on a use is different than an ordinance outright prohibiting a use. So if your zone said, "We allow medical offices, but we don't allow X-ray training facilities," that would be different than the ordinance just not addressing it at all. So as I stated tonight, we have copies of state authorization... State certificates authorizing the applicant to operate this facility, and if the board were to define it as a school, then we would fall under an inherently beneficial use. If you choose to not define it as a school and you want to define it as an X-ray training center, I'm okay with that because I have additional testimony to further justify our variance request. Now, I looked in the Springfield Township ordinance under the purpose and scope of the zoning ordinance, and I'm just reading from chapter thirty-five. These are the purposes of zoning. The land ordinance is adopted to promote the public... To promote and protect the public health, safety, general welfare, and further into the following related to more specific objectives. And these are known as the goals and objectives, which I'm sure you've heard before, you know, guide appropriate development of all lands in a manner which will promote health, safety, morals, welfare, secure safety from fire, flood, panic, and other natural man-made disasters, to provide adequate light air and open space, to ensure that the development of the township does not conflict with the development and general welfare of neighboring municipalities. And really goes on to describe a list of goals that really come down to one thing, to keep uses that are compatible with each other and to keep uses that are incompatible away from other uses that it does not complement. So for example, traditionally in cities, it was common that a factory would get built, and it's surrounded with homes because it was a convenient location for a workforce, but outside the cities, we don't generally place a factory next to a house. And similar to that, we don't seek to locate a house on a state highway either because these are incompatible uses. So I'm going to go on to explain why this proposed use is completely compatible with what's already going on in that building in all aspects. In the O-zone, we're allowed to have single-family dwellings with certain restrictions, office buildings or a group of office buildings, private schools, houses of worship, municipal buildings, public schools, public parks, childcare centers, and medical offices. Unfortunately, this brief list does not reflect the limitless possibilities and potential for new ideas or combinations of uses which may very well be compatible in the zone. As I stated earlier, it's possible this use was just not conceived of when the zoning ordinance was written. So in order to consider the effects of this use on the surrounding area as well as the other tenants in the building, we start looking at the positive aspects of the application. So number one is, the use is clearly in demand, and this proposed school would help satisfy that demand. Item two is, as you'll hear from the traffic expert next, there's absolutely no traffic concern. He had done a report, and there's no parking concern either on this property, assuming that all the uses are operating together. One of the proposals is to add a handicapped accessible parking stall where a conforming stall does not exist. That's a positive. I indicated about the hours of operation and the lack of conflicts with the uses which presently occur on the site. That's also a positive. And most importantly for the neighborhood is that this type of use doesn't generate any objectionable noise, nuisances or blight. If we were to propose to you tonight, for example, a place that served ice cream, where people stand in the parking lot and congregate for hours waiting in line, that would be a negative because that proposes noise, nuisances. This use is two days a week. It's totally contained inside the building. There is not going to be any disruption or disturbance to any of the neighbors. When you look at the negative impacts of an application, they're usually characterized in the following categories: traffic, stormwater runoff, loss of vegetation, filling of wetland areas, construction in a flood hazard area, an increase in impervious surfaces, increase in noise, the loss of open space, or a use that provides no benefit to the public. So clearly, this project does not fall into any of those categories. The building's existing. The parking lot's existing. The traffic impacts will be addressed by Mr. Feranda. There's no development proposed. We're not cutting down trees. We're not filling environmentally sensitive areas. We're not impacting streams, open space, or anything like that. So looking at the analysis in that respect, it's my opinion that clearly the positives outweigh the negatives and that this variance could be granted without substantial detriment to the public good. Your zone ordinance would not be impaired through the granting of this variance as the project seeks to implement a compatible use to what's already being done on this property. Any questions?
Anybody on the board have any questions? Or professionals have any questions?
Actually, I do have a question, and I don't know if this is for you or for the tenant. Is... Is there any overlap of curriculum between people that are starting it and maybe the people that are, like, in their final phase? Will new people be coming in? Or it goes A to Z, and then you start A to Z again?
I believe it's A to Z, and then... Yes. So it's a four-month class, four students, and they don't accept new students until that class is over.
And then, is there any limit to the amount of students that are allowed to be in the program? If it's real successful, can six, eight, ten people be coming into the program?
The maximum is sixteen.
Hold on, Steve. I'm sorry. Just state your name and your address.
My name's Sally Alkumari. My address is four twenty Morris Avenue, Springfield.
Okay, and you are the applicant?
Yes.
And you were sworn in the last time you appeared, so you're still under oath?
Yes.
Thank you.
So the maximum is sixteen, but we're never going to have sixteen at the same time. It'll be four with one instructor at any given time.
And so you will never have more than four students, and that's...
Yeah, that's why we have, like, two days. So it's going to be Wednesday and Thursday.
So if by chance we were to approve this, that you would agree to never have any more than four students?
What if one of the four students fails and has to restart the curriculum?
So he will go to the next semester, and we can't have more than sixteen for the other semester.
Would they... So, I'm sorry, maybe I'm not explaining myself, but let's say you had four incoming that you were ready to go with once the current class graduated, and one of those class members doesn't graduate. Would you be removing someone from the incoming class so that that person could retake the curriculum again, or would you tell them they'd have to reapply a later date?
No, he has to reapply at a later date. So it's not going to be the next semester. Once we finish that semester, he might go to the following semester.
So if you become wildly successful, would you only accept four students? In other words, you said you're going to include like sixteen, I thought?
Okay, so I think I understand what she's saying. She... There's four, four-hour slots, and that's four students each slot, so that's sixteen students.
So are you capable of having six per slot?
No. And I'm not allowed to.
So four per slot is the magic number?
Yeah.
And it would never go above that?
No.
Is that part of your approval from the Department of Education?
The maximum from them is sixteen.
Okay.
Any other questions?
It's in the letter, right? Yeah. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Chairman, just to make sure the record's clear, getting back to A1, on the first page, the first paragraph says, "The board accepted its committee findings and voted to award the school approval with a class capacity of sixteen students."
Sixteen students, okay.
So it's definite.
Got you.
That's based on her license. Ladies and gentlemen, do you have any more questions for Mr. Lieber? From the staff? Okay, now, just to... And Mr. Lieber, step back for a moment?
Is there anybody from the public that would have any questions for this person? Okay, fine. Let's continue.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, I present Mr. A. Andrew Feranda, who is... Mr. Chairman, I present Mr. A. Andrew Feranda, who is our traffic expert. I'd like to have him sworn, please.
Just step up to the mic. Do you swear affirm to tell the truth?
I do.
And state your name and address, please.
A. Andrew Feranda, F-E-R-A-N-D-A.
Mr. Feranda, could you please provide the board with your educational certifications?
I'm at 277 White Horse Pike, Atco, New Jersey, 08004. My background, I'm a civil engineer, Bachelor of Science in Civil Engineering from Drexel University. I am a professional engineer licensed in the state of New Jersey. My license is valid as of now. I'm also a professional traffic operations engineer, which is a higher certification in the traffic engineering field. I've reviewed traffic for boards such as Cranberry Township, I'm traffic consultant. Freehold Township, I'm traffic consultant. I've appeared before more than a hundred boards throughout the state.
Mr. Chairman, I'd ask that you accept Mr. Feranda as an expert, as in traffic study.
We can do that.
Okay.
Would you care to say it or say?
The site, as it exists, has twenty parking spaces. There are two separate parking lots or parking areas on site. There's a smaller, five-space parking area directly off of Morris Ave. There's a second parking area that has fifteen parking spaces off Marcy. There are no connections between the two parking areas. The front smaller parking area that has five spaces also has a handicap space, but it's not ADA compliant in the sense that there's no landing area for room next to the vehicle to allow a handicapped person to get out of the vehicle. This application seeks to correct that by providing that landing area, making the space ADA compliant. To do that, one space will have to be lost to provide the area adjacent to that parking space. The existing building is 3,747 square feet, as mentioned earlier. The site contains a mix of office and medical. The parking requirement by your ordinance for medical is one parking space for 200 square feet. For non-medical, such as the accounting office, the parking requirement is one for 250 square feet. Going by the more intense parking requirement or the parking requirement that would require more parking spaces, the medical use, one for 200, using that parking requirement for the whole building, the 3747, the building will require 18.5 or 19 parking spaces. Therefore, the existing twenty parking spaces on site, five in the front, fifteen in the rear, exceed the parking requirement for the most intense use on site, which would be if the whole building were a medical office. It's not, but if that whole building or had the medical office applied to it to get your parking requirement for the site, nineteen spaces would be required. What we're proposing is nineteen parking spaces based on reducing by one in the front parking area. Therefore, the building under its most intense use, fully medical use, not what we're proposing, but the parking lot would be capable of meeting that parking requirement with the corrected handicap space being ADA compliant. We've also done a parking count out at the site. Parking, obviously, is a concern. We wanted to get measurement of what the parking conditions are at the site on a typical day. We counted on March 4th during a full day, I believe it was a Monday when it was operational, from nine to six. We counted from nine in the morning to 2:00 p.m. Every fifteen minutes, we counted all of the parking spaces, and we accounted for parking spaces that were full. From, again, nine to two, we recorded that the maximum use occurred at 1:15, and again, at 2:00, and the maximum use was two spaces used in the smaller lot and ten spaces used in the larger lot, two of the five in the front lot, and ten of the fifteen in the rear lot, were twelve parking spaces, was the maximum use. During the other periods, there was less use, and that was for the dental office, the doctor office, and the accounting office being operational. That other space that was mentioned, about eight hundred, give or take, more than eight hundred, wasn't occupied. That is part of what would be used by the school. But as was mentioned in the planning testimony, we have one doctor, one dentist who is training the students, one dentist who runs the doctor, dentist office, either training or treating patients. On the off days when there are no patients, there will be the four students. As described earlier, there could be up to sixteen, but that doesn't mean sixteen will be in the building. It will be the instructor and the four students. There'll be, the other sixteen, the other students wouldn't be in at once, they would be scheduled at other times. So, there's really not a need, a demand for all of those sixteen people at any given time. It's the instructor and the four students. As was noted during a typical day, there's the one doctor, there's the three administrative staff, and there's the three patients. That's up to seven persons, seven parked cars on a typical day. So, in effect, the student, four students and the instructor represent actually a less intense use than a typical day when the dental office would be open. Now, there was described the situation where once the X-ray training is ended, then they go into this administrative training. And when that occurs, there's three administrative staff. One of them would not be working, and two students would be brought in to help out in the office and to learn the administrative end of the dental office. They get their feel around the dental office and what the tasks are beyond just the X-ray training. With that said, that means there's one more than your typical seven that would be in the office. That would mean there's an additional parking space. There might be eight persons assigned to the dental office when the two assistants are in instead of, or the two students are in instead of the one assistant. What that means is the maximum parking that we've recorded at twelve with, right now there's twenty parking spaces available, but in the future, when we correct the handicap parking space and there's nineteen parking spaces available, there could be twelve, thirteen parking spaces used. Based on observations, based on the particular uses of both the dental office and the school, there is more than adequate parking on site. Now, we did look at the site as well for the arrangement of the parking spaces, the parking spaces. Let me start with, and maybe I can hold this up, I don't have a easel, but this is the site, and I can hold her up. The site has two access, one for Morris.
Oh, there's an easel.
There's an easel. Thank you very much.
It's not exactly the same.
I would go on. There's a driveway on Morris, and there's a driveway on Marcy.
This is, that was from the first.
You have to tell them?
It's very similar to the one you're looking at.
Probably is exactly the same. It's related with the package. Okay, here we go. Thank you.
Do I do some more?
No, that's good. Okay.
So, can you just run that back and forth?
Sure.
Over here.
Can you hear? Yep. Okay. The site has five parking spaces. Again, we're proposing to correct the handicap parking space by putting an area adjacent to the parking space to allow any handicapped person to get out, swing the door, if it's a, if, if it's a van and the side door must open to allow the wheelchair, okay, that will allow a wheelchair to come out the side of a van. So, there's space available, but that will reduce that parking area to four parking spaces. The rear parking area has the fifteen parking spaces. The reason I wanted to put this up is the lot is an irregularly shaped lot. The parking on site is provided as best possible with the areas available. As you notice, there's a curve in the road, it's a corner lot. The site was laid out to try and keep the parking away from the view of the road. Yes, the small parking area in front is in view of Morris Ave. There are shrubs alongside of the property. I might note that there's no parking during the day on Marcy. We observed during our parking count that nobody from this site parked on the road, and that was important for our count because we wanted to make sure that we were containing everybody on site. And we did, we noticed that no one during the full parking count had parked on the road. So, the twelve spaces that we observed were the maximum. There was no additional parking out on the road. Again, the site as laid out makes the best use of the area, irregularly shaped as it is, that it can be for these parking spaces. Their existing parking spaces, they're used currently by the existing facility, by the doctor's office, by the dentist's office, and by the accounting office. We're not proposing to change any of that. Certainly, some of the spaces are narrower than your ordinance requires. Your ordinance requires nine by eighteen. Most of the parking spaces would be what I call perimeter parking spaces in the sense that they can, they have room to put the bumper out to the edge. Typically, when you have a nine by eighteen requirement, it's really important when you have head-to-head parking because if you have short spaces and head-to-head parking, if one car takes up more space, then it could allow another car to back into an aisle that is needed for circulation. In this case, because it's perimeter parking for the most part, the bumper can exceed the area of the space and not interfere with any car head-to-head. And that's why the layout as it is works, even though some of the spaces are a little bit shorter. I know there's one space in here that's a little bit longer as well. The width of the spaces is a little bit narrower, but again, it's an existing condition, they're being used by the existing offices on site. And I will just note that from a traffic standpoint, we don't anticipate any more traffic than is currently going to the site, again, because the use that's proposed with the school, the students, and the instructor are on the off days when the dental office isn't in operation. So, it's a trade-off. It's just basically using the office when it wouldn't be used on a Wednesday and a Thursday. With the instructor being the doctor who is the dentist in the dental office, that is how we anticipate the traffic to run on site. It will be no more intense than is currently experienced on site.
I'm sorry, can you just repeat the number of spots which are off-standard? You said that there were some that were more narrow and shorter?
They vary. I can't tell you exactly which ones are.
Of the, of the spots, how many are not, are below the requirement?
This isn't an exact number, but it might be half, maybe over half, maybe two-thirds of the spaces. And when I say they're narrower than the requirement, they may be seven and a half feet instead of the nine feet, they may be eight feet, eight and a half feet. The length of the spaces might be seventeen and a half. What I'm saying is, there's a lot of irregular spaces in there, but they're short of the requirement, but they're usable, they're currently being used.
One of the big issues that we had that I haven't heard addressed yet is bringing this parking lot more into conformity. And you haven't addressed that. All you've really done is tell us that it works the way it is, and this is an opportunity to maybe get this parking lot in a little bit of a better position for larger-sized Is there only one handicap spot required for that entire lot?
Yes.
So, the people in the back, they're, you know, if they're handicapped and they need to use somebody in the back, they're, it's tough for them?
The areas are set up because they have basically separation in front and just off of Marcy and Morris. And we, I took my answer, I haven't the chance to put it together, but last meeting, beginning of it, spoken about it, that all just have separate entrances, and so the handicap space, you know, it's kind of a loss here that the requirement isn't more intense because you're really only going to serve the entrance up front there.
Right.
And obviously, there's separate medical uses here, so it really depends on where the, for me, for more practical purposes, where's the most appropriate place for handicap spots? And just slap it on the site wherever it can go. Maybe the doctor's office is more appropriate for any handicap spot, right? If we do people coming in properly with medical.
Logically.
And where's the entrance? I don't remember what he said. The entrance to the medical is in the front?
Yeah.
And then, in addition to that, where's, there's compliance issues beyond that about access, actually having a grade to access the door. Some of these have separate in front of them, they don't have a ramp, and so handicap space seems to be in a place where they can access with a wheelchair or structure. And that's not something that's was spelled out in the ADA code, but they're complying as far as, you know, providing the space. And you can't really impose anything beyond that.
So, it's a shame, though.
Hey, great.
Put the parking lot in and of itself. You didn't address a real concern that the board had, you know, so what are you going to do about that?
We did look at what it would take to make these spaces compliant, and it would take losing spaces. Now, if you would offer a variance to lose spaces, that's something that certainly we could look at. What we looked at is this row of nine spaces. If this were reduced by two spaces, you could make all of those seven spaces compliant. But there is a trade-off there, and what that would do is then put us into having less than the requirement your ordinance requires for parking spaces on site. So, our goal was to at least provide the spaces required by your ordinance.
But why aren't you making an argument that even if you made the parking lot more compliant, you're telling us that with the businesses that are there, with the potential for the school to be there, and for students and so forth, that even during your peak-time studies, your, the parking lot isn't being overtaxed? So, why aren't you using that as an argument and making the parking lot more in conformity with the ordinance?
If I can. You said the maximum, if using the most conservative estimate, the conservative estimate would be nineteen spots, that right? So, I mean, by that logic, you wouldn't be able to lose a spot if that's the case.
They're looking for a variance to begin with.
Right.
Okay? So, the parking lot really is, it's really, it's very disjointed, dysfunctional, and so forth.
Agreed.
So, why wouldn't you want to try to make it better, especially if you don't need all those parking spaces, and ask for a variance for the parking?
We believe a variance for, we're providing what is required for the handicap parking space. We're making that better.
I understand that.
And the trade-off, the trade-off with the number of spaces And the trade-off, the trade-off with the number of spaces would be for size. You would lose spaces to gain size. Our argument is that the size of the spaces adequately accommodates existing traffic, and certainly, we could ask for that variance for less parking spaces and provide you with, say, seven or eight along here to improve the width of those parking spaces, but then you now have less parking spaces to use on-site.
Let me jump up. There's a few scenarios as far as the variances are current here. If they provide the parking as-is on-site, the number of spaces that are not conforming with the actual dimensional requirements, they're still going to require a variance for that. Because it's outlined in the township ordinance that when you have a change in tenancy or use, you're required to conform with the township standard.
Which is why we talked about this to begin with.
Which would multiple variances, a few multiple, a few variances for probably the aisle width and for the parking space dimensions. Additionally, the flip side, if they did actually bring it up to the parking standards and lose spaces, they would require variance, obviously, from the parking ratio requirement. As I understood it from the traffic engineer's report, they were willing to seek out spaces off-site. While that would require a variance
It's mentioned in his letter.
Technically, the township ordinance says that that's not permitted, to provide spaces off-site. But when you're looking at a variance and you're providing testimony about weighing, positive and negative, you know, the board could consider that. They consider allowing to have more spaces off-site, even though it's not how the ordinance, you know, ideally likes to see it. You'd still be finding that balance. You're providing the standards on the site, up to the dimensional standards, you're providing the spaces, while off-site, you still have capacity, more capacity for parking. That's not, to me, to provide that testimony, the positives and negatives of those variances, but there are a lot of things at play. There's different, there's different scenarios that should be considered as far as how we're going to do this.
Thank you.
And we absolutely understand exactly what you're saying, and we're trying to simplify the application by saying we're making this improvement. We certainly are flexible to provide that, the board being aware that the consequences of making the spaces as wide as the ordinance requires would be losing spaces. And I did have in my report the potential for the off-site parking spaces. That's something that's been looked into. Certainly could accommodate any overflow, but that's something that the board would have to weigh. Each one of those options requires us to ask the board for relief, and we're trying to simplify it by asking for the most minimal relief, which would be the size of the spaces. And the reason that I'm proposing that is the least intrusive relief is because it's an existing condition and it's working on-site. Those spaces are being used. And if there's only 12 spaces being used, there's ability to separate the vehicles on-site without having to be close to another vehicle. It works under the existing conditions, and certainly, we could change that. The board could make that a requirement and condition, and we've looked at it. We could make those spaces, you know, change that nine, row of nine spaces into seven or eight spaces and improve the size of those spaces, but certainly, that would be something for the board to consider, that we would require relief for that loss of a space.
I have a question to ask. So if you go with these smaller spaces and somebody has a big pickup truck or SUV or something, and they pull in, and potentially they're taking more than one spot, does that mess up your whole calculation?
It's interesting you should say that. There is one very large spot in the rear of the site that could accommodate a larger vehicle, but as I noted, the maximum parking count we have in the rear lot is 10 where there's 15 spaces available. So should a larger vehicle come in and require to maybe take more than one space because it's wider than that space that's available, there, under most circumstances, would be an available space next to a space that they could pull into.
Do you, have any chance of photographs of your study?
Photographs of the
Of the counts?
Of the counts? No, but in my report, I did put the numbers, the actual count.
I would like to see how these cars sit in there when you counted them, to see how practical it is for
We did not take pictures of the cars when we were counting.
I also have a question. Assuming, let's say, you went to get some spots off-site on the other side of Morris Avenue, what is your opinion about pedestrians parking across the street and having to cross Morris Avenue?
There is a traffic signal quite a distance up the road. Certainly, I would not recommend that any pedestrian cross, other than at a signalized intersection of the state highway, Morris Ave.
So realistically, if people were parking across the street, would you expect them to go all the way up to the light, please come across and come back, or they would dodge through traffic ultimately, or attempt to?
Realistically, I don't think those spaces would be needed based on our counts. They are available. We noted that there's the potential for those to be used, but we don't think that those would be necessary based on the parking counts for peak use.
You know, it's interesting. You keep saying, "You think, you think, you think." And if I'm not mistaken, one of the things that we asked you to do was to come back with a plan that gave a better parking lot, that accommodated cars of today as opposed to cars of 10 years ago or 20 years ago that were smaller. A lot of these vehicles are much, much bigger. Most lots nowadays have to be hairpin striped and so forth. You don't meet any of that, all right? I realize that, you know, this may be a hardship, but this is the opportunity to make this thing proper. And we asked you to work with us. We gave you the opportunity to go back and come back here. You've had two months to do that, and you really haven't done it.
Our application was submitted back in February.
And, yes, I know that. And then you came back last month, you weren't, you weren't seen because there wasn't enough people here, so that was another month. So it's two months since then, and I don't think you really took the board's advice to come back with a better parking lot.
As for car sizes, car sizes actually are coming down. The width of typical car is six to six and a half feet. The largest vehicle, fire engine, would even be seven, seven and a half, maybe eight-foot wide bumper. Your typical lane width is 11, sometimes 10 feet, but your typical lane width is 11 to 12 feet. So vehicles can park in these spaces. I understand that it doesn't meet your ordinance requirement, and what I'm trying to say is we have a condition on-site that we're trying to work with, we're trying to better.
I don't, I don't know that you're necessarily trying to work with, but you said you have one oversized space, right?
Correct.
Okay. So a Chevy Suburban comes in, and an hour later, another one comes in. What happens?
They
You have one oversized space, Chevy Suburban pulls in the one oversized space, then a second one comes in, and so that one's going to take away spaces from other people, yes?
It could potentially take one of the five additional spaces that are available to it. Again, our maximum parking count show that there were 10 maximum-used parking spaces, so there's multiple spaces available.
If the second car is large, okay, it's using up more space than is available to it in a smaller space, admittedly, yes?
Correct.
Thank you. Okay. I think that's the point we're trying to make.
Mr. Chairman, if I may. I want to express that we have every intention of meeting whatever reasonable criteria the board is going to require. If the board makes the decision that it wants this parking lot redone and reformatted so that the parking spots meet the current ordinance, we will certainly do it without question, without question. The issue that we have is, number one, if heaven forbid, this application is denied tonight, okay, the parking lot as it exists is still going to exist. The spot sizes are still going to be the same spot sizes, and everything's going to go on the same way that it's been for the past however many years. And I think that's what the engineer was getting at, that it's been in existing use. This is how it's been used for all this time, and we've never had a problem. So the reason why we're trying to go forward with that way of doing things is because if we redo the parking lot, which again, we have no problem doing, then we're talking about other variances that are going to be required, as was mentioned before, about the lane width, about the number of spots that are there to meet the uses of the building. It opens up just like a whole big bucket of worms. Again, we're happy to do it. I want to point out two other things. Number one, as far as the off-site parking is concerned, we have it available to us. It's not
Where is it?
At the funeral parlor, right across the street.
So what happens when they have a big funeral?
We have, we have a document from the funeral parlor renting us five spots. That is not an optimal situation. That is a last, last grass.
And where would those folks cross the street?
That's the problem.
Because the only reasonable locations to cross are either walking up a hill, crossing over a busy intersection, a very busy intersection, where in the winter, cars get stuck because they're on a hill. Or at the very bottom of the hill, where there's a gas station and a Chinese restaurant and people, it's like a four-way.
I agree with you.
Yeah.
I agree with you. And that's part of the whole bucket of worms I was talking about, because if we redo the parking lot and make less spots, and you folks say, "Well, we need something off-site," it's really not, it's not great. But we'll do it. We'll do whatever you folks ask us to do within reason to make this application work. We're very happy to work with you. Like I said, we just thought that it was, it was best to try and keep the status quo because it's been the status quo, and it's been working for however many years.
And in my professional opinion, and I've seen many parking lots, most of them much, much larger than this one, but I've seen many, many parking lots, and it is typically better to have more parking spaces than the size. Now, we can restripe the parking lot as well, put a hairpin-type striping in. What that does is kind of force the driver to stay in the middle of their spot. That typically helps to organize the parking so that somebody doesn't park too close to another stall. That's something that we could do, re-striping the parking lot. That would help with a narrower space to allow there be separation between the vehicles as much as possible.
And if you did that, what would it do to the number of spots?
With hairpin striping? That wouldn't change the spots. The spaces would stay the same. It's just a matter of putting striping in that allows, directs, somebody who's parking to stay in the middle of that parking space. It's typically a U-shaped stripe, and it's, it's not too wide, but it's wide enough that it defines an area in the middle of that space.
So creates the optimal condition that would
It visually has the cars stay away from the edge, and that's certainly something that could be done with a narrower space that helps to organize parking.
The township's ordinance requires that the hairpin parking, the striping be 18 inches wide, just for your reference. So I think it might impact the size of the spaces.
How much do you think it might impact the lot?
Well, I mean, if I just look at the parking plan and I look at putting a hairpin stripe, it generally makes spaces wider when you have a hairpin stripe.
That's what I thought.
My experience in other towns, it generally, like, the nine by 18, if you did a hairpin stripe, it still makes it a little bit wider. It doesn't always center, but you're going to lose some space. You're going to either lose a full space because it's going to be so small. I don't necessarily see how it works. If it's going to be to the township standard.
Here's how, you go from the center of the hairpin to the center of the hairpin, and what it actually does, if you're saying it's 18 inches wide, then that narrows the space by nine inches. What it does is
So what would a nine-foot space look like with two hairpin stripes on the side of it? How, why would it look to a driver?
It would be nine inches shorter on either side. It's still the same space because center of that hairpin to center of the hairpin is still your nine feet.
Visually, as a driver, it would appear to be seven and a half feet between the lines, correct?
Correct.
Okay. I just wanted to make that clear.
So in our case, if there were, say, an eight and a half foot space, or, let's take an eight foot, just to be, take a round number, eight-foot space, the hairpin would come in, nine inch on either side, that eight foot would appear narrower because it would define the outside edge of the space in to allow the vehicle to park towards the middle of that, allowing more space between the vehicles.
I think my two cents would be, the spaces would look so small that I don't know if it would be real advantage or not to add the hairpin. I, I'm an advocate of hairpin. I like hairpin, but when they're already starting out smaller, to make them even a little more crumbly.
Yeah, no, the object is to make it more user-friendly, not to make it less user-friendly. That's really the, the whole point of the ordinance, I believe, right?
Now, I did have a question about the, the front parking lot. Were any of those spaces within the actual right-of-way? It wasn't, it always was kind of nebulous to me, if that one space near the road was within
Yeah, the one that's the closest
I believe, based on the line as it's shown on the plan, that part of that space may be within the right-of-way, but that being said, we took out the whole space in between and provided that as the handicap area. That could be narrowed. We provided, I believe it was nine feet. That could be narrowed to the requirement, what's that?
Well, the space is eight foot, and the strip area would be eight feet?
It could be narrower to what's required by ADA to bring that other space back onto the property. That certainly could be done as well.
I would recommend that the part of the
I believe your, your parking space should be 11 feet as well. The handicap space should be 11 feet, and then the aisle should, it has to be five, what, 16 feet?
Again.
So you'll, you'll
Compliant.
You'll gain three feet to make it compliant, which will help push that out of the right-of-way.
That's correct.
Just, Mr. Chairman, if I can, just for the record, the board that you're looking at is, just to confirm, it's March 7, 2019, one of one, is that correct?
March 7th, sorry, March 7th, 2019, one of one, correct.
And just for the record, that was submitted as part of the application, so it need not be marked as an exhibit?
Correct.
Mr. Chairman, I have a few questions.
Certainly.
Better understand this. I was, when I saw the striping plan, I was surprised that, like, the chairman said that we didn't get the response to visualize what the restriping plan. We got the narrative in your memo that basically says that three spaces will be eliminated, but I don't know how that was achieved. And so my question is, when you, when you did restripe, did you just do it for the dimension of the space, or did you take into account the drive aisles, one-way drive aisles, two-way drive aisles, to meet the township standards?
We did it for the size of the space. Again, being that it's an irregularly shaped lot with narrow aisles, I do understand what you're saying, that the two-way traffic, it's not optimal for two-way traffic. That being said, it's a very low-volume site, very low number of parking spaces, so there's not a typical opportunity for vehicles to be going two-way. Could it happen? Yes. Is there enough room on-site? It certainly does happen, and it works with the few times that that would happen.
The reason why I asked the question was more so because as we're, we're understanding the different scenarios, it's helpful, I think, for the board, with your professional testimony, to, to let them know what the trade-offs are. If you do actually bring the lot to conformity, will you even be able to achieve the township standards, and what are the impacts of that if you don't? Drive aisles being too short, parking spaces still being non-conformant. A striping plan would help show that so we, we could visualize it together. The other impact is if you do restripe the lot and you have a deficiency of parking spaces, what would that impact be? I think that testimony is helpful to the board to understand, you know, the analysis you did, you came up with a number of parking spaces based on anecdotal and visual data to understand how many spaces you think this site needs. You testified to that. site needs. You testified to that. Now, if you remove the three spaces, will you be at a deficiency based on what you, the analysis you've done, and then, you know, what is the impact of that following? I think, I think those are what, that type of testimony is what's important to the board, to help understand what they're weighing, the variances that they're weighing. Because right now, I think that's really having to be discussed at all.
Okay. The, the site, as shown, has nine parking spaces in a row. It's single-side loaded. Typically, vehicles are infrequently passing each other. There's another access to the five parking spaces to the rear. These will not interfere with traffic going through the site. As you mentioned, should these spaces that are, say, 17-foot or 17-and-a-half foot be extended, that would certainly decrease the aisle width, and then again, reduce the ability to keep parking space, the number of parking spaces on site. Our first goal was to keep the number of parking spaces so that traffic wouldn't overflow, parking wouldn't overflow and leave the site. We wanted the number of spaces to meet the ordinance requirements. Size of spaces is important. I, I don't disagree. Again, these spaces are single-sided. There's ability to access them by going to the opposite side of the drive aisle without interfering with any traffic, because it is a low volume and it's single-side loaded.
How many spaces did your report conclude that was the, the demand for the site?
The actual counts were, at peak time, 1:15 and 2 o'clock, there were two cars parked in the front parking lot, and 10 cars parked within the 15 parking spaces in the rear. Again, the 15 spaces include one directly behind the doctor's office, nine in a single row, and then there's four along Marcy, and then one additional that is tucked in behind these parking spaces across from the office.
And that parking analysis was conducted while the dental office was in use? Patients were being seen. It was a normal business day for all the students on site?
Correct, correct.
And you also mentioned that the, the dental school on days when that would be operating and the dental office would not be operating, that it would actually be a less intense number of parking?
Correct. With the four students and one instructor, that's less intense than the one doctor, three patients, and three assistants.
So two less, really, from seven to five. So you'd really be looking at 10 spaces, let's say, if we just worked on the same analysis. Conditions were exactly the same.
Correct.
If you eliminate three spaces through the restryping of the lot, regardless of the aisle widths being impacted or following township standards, you're looking at providing 16 spaces where you're really seeing 10 to 12, let's say 10 to 13, just in case, to get an extra spot. Which means, I mean, under any analysis that you could provide, that, that's saying that there's, there's ample parking on the site. There's an additional three to four spaces.
Agreed.
And so that's what I wanted to provide to the board.
Well, that's kind of what I said earlier, when I said, "Why aren't you bringing a lot that's more conforming?" And then talking to us about a variance for the parking spaces? Because you, you got enough parking spaces under your scenario. So if you made the lot, if you brought the lot into the 21st century with the town ordinance, you still have enough parking based on your analysis, unless your analysis is wrong.
No, no, the analysis is actual counts.
I mean, you know, you did mention it's only two businesses. There are three. I really wondered whether that had anything to do with, with anything. But, I mean, to me, I think getting a lot striped properly and so forth, even if you have to reduce some spaces based on your analysis, again, if it's accurate, you have enough parking. So I, I think that that, to me, is a better result.
And, and I think there's, there's credibility there, because the ordinance gives you an opportunity at a change of tenancy to make, to make that request. And so I think that it's a missed opportunity if you don't.
Thank you. I agree.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I agree with you. I think the fact that if you bring the parking requirements up to code with the demise of a couple of spots, the fact that you already met the burden of proof that you had the demand, you know, the, even 16 spots would meet the demand of your requirements, that is a much better achievement than keeping things the way they are and, and not have them conform.
Mr. Chairman, if I also may, I'm sure you recognize that the team here on behalf of our client is different from last time.
I understand.
And the information that we received as to what took place at the last meeting was very much secondhand. I'm pleased to tell you that although we misunderstood what your concerns were, okay, we do have prepared a model of the parking lot restriped in accordance with what you're talking about.
Where have you been for the last hour and 15 minutes? I mean, you brought, you brought a planner. The planner wasn't the issue. It was the parking. All right, let's move forward, please.
Okay, what we have here is a plan.
We'll mark this as-
Do you have any copies of that that we can actually see?
I can pass it around. This is a presentation plan. This is not-
You're going to mark that as an exhibit, please?
Okay.
Page three, today's page, yes.
Okay. As I had described in my testimony, we could provide parking spaces with the width that meets the ordinance. We would lose a parking space in this rear area that has five. There would be three spaces along Marcy instead of four. Parking space here, it exceeds the parking requirements. It's longer, it has the width. So we would lose one space here. In this row of nine, it would become a row of seven. We would lose two parking spaces to allow for those spaces to meet your ordinance requirements, nine by 18. Losing two, losing one, that's three spaces. We would then be down, based on losing the space in the front, that's something we have to do to accommodate the ADA-compliant handicap parking space. We lost one there. We're down to 19. We lose three in the back. We now have 16. 16 spaces that are sized per your ordinance, but now are less than the parking requirement. And might I add, it's the maximum parking requirement, it's not the existing configuration, because there is an accounting office in there which goes by less intense parking requirement by your ordinance, which is one per 250 square feet. That would require, say, I believe it's 17 plus 18, it's more than 17, so that would require 18, based on the existing mix. But my recommendation would be, since we don't know what the tenants would be in that office at any given time, that the most intense use, since it's mostly medical office there, that that parking requirement be applied. That would be 19 for the size of the building. This plan with three less spaces than the 19 required would require a variance for the three spaces.
What is the aisle, aisle width for the parking spaces?
The aisle width would be improved, because we've lost two spaces. The space in between this, we would try and reduce, it would reduce some of the landscape buffering. The aisle width-
I have a scale.
I don't have a scale with me.
I do have one.
Sure.
I mean, I can scale it off. It's about 20 feet.
The aisle width would, from the row of nine to the inner edge, would be 20 feet. Two-way traffic is typically 24 feet. Again, it's a low-volume parking area. 20 feet will allow two vehicles to pass, but it's not compliant with the ordinance for two-way travel.
For, I mean, and generally, two-way travel, you can anticipate that there are two rows of cars on each side in a typical parking, in a more normal parking scenario, where cars would be backing up, so the 24 feet is helpful. So I think 20 feet is probably sufficient for cars to pass by and cars to back out, because there's no one behind them.
Would, would it be your opinion that eliminating the three spaces and coming down to 16 would be more optimal in the long run than the way it is right now?
Yes. I, I think bringing the parking spaces to the township standards is the ideal scenario. I think it's, it's an opportunity for this site, although irregular, to become more regular, and for future tenants to, you know, benefit from that as well, because, again, change in tenancy, you know, we'll see down the road. But I think it'll function better. I think when people go into the site, if it seems more organized, it's easier to navigate.
Right, right. It's hodgepodge and so forth.
I agree.
We wouldn't have put this plan together if we didn't think that this was an alternative. We just wanted to understand where the board felt the priorities were. The width of the parking space or the number of parking spaces. We certainly didn't want to have this parking looking for parking spaces on Marcy, which doesn't happen now, which shouldn't happen, because it's, parking is prohibited.
According to your testimony, it shouldn't happen, because-
It shouldn't.
Again, if your calculations are accurate, you have more than enough parking to handle what's anticipated.
Correct.
Generally, Mr. Chairman, if there are sites, spaces that are undersized, sometimes they become eliminated de facto, because people won't use them. So I think, or they cross over a line, and then a spot becomes unusable because someone's, you know, double-parked.
Correct, yeah.
So I think that to restructure and to reorganize the parking lot is beneficial to make all the spaces usable now.
And, and this would allow that to happen?
I believe so.
And certainly, the board could condition any approval on what you're seeing now that we're presenting, that would be more compliant, yet less number of parking spaces. It doesn't meet the number of parking spaces requirement, but meets the size of the parking space.
Does anybody on the board have any additional questions?
I have one question about the spots on Morris Avenue. If all those spots are filled, can somebody pull back out of those spots and go face-forward on Morris Avenue safely, or do they have to back out on Morris Avenue? Is there enough room for them to?
There is room, and it's done now. Those are typically the least desirable. Again, during the peak time, we found two of those spaces being used. I think by default, the patients, the employees like to park in the rear more. If you pass by the site, you'll see on a regular basis that there's not a lot of parking going on in that front parking space, because it's not on-site, but just difficult getting onto the road at that point.
But the cars won't have to back out on Morris to say-
No.
They can pull out, face-forward on Morris, if it's full. If it's in peak capacity, there's no problems with maneuvering.
Correct. And having this area available certainly would help any maneuvers on-site as well. So this is improving that situation, yes.
Maybe, I don't, I don't know. Maybe one of the things that you may want to do on a site if we approve this is dedicate those spots in front for the students that may not be coming in and out all day, that, you know, the patients may be able to use back.
My concern always with dedicating parking spaces, if somebody pulls into that parking space, a patient, and they're not one of the students, then they would have to leave that, go back on the road. And, I mean, if there's a parking space available for them, usually first come for a serve is best utilized, especially in a parking situation like this, where the-
No better than me.
Yeah. I've seen many of parking spaces. The worst case is when you're recirculating, using the roadway to get between the parking spaces, or parking lots. So if there's a space available, I suggest that they be able to use it, rather than being told, "No, this is for students. Go to the other parking space."
Any other questions from anybody on the board? Or professionals have anything else that they want to add? Or is there anybody from the public that would have any questions? Okay. The parking lot has to be brought up to code, and that seems to work. Ms. Hocken seems to think that that's a, a good, a good fit?
I haven't had a chance to look at that plan, and I probably won't tonight, just because it's a lot to get on. But as long as the space, I understand from the, from the narrative in the memo, exactly what's presented on that plan. The three spaces that were lost were because they extended too much of those spaces. My only, actually, my only question to the traffic engineer is, do those spaces provide the hairpin striping?
We could provide hairpin striping. Again, they would be, the width that's required in hairpin striping certainly could help to center a vehicle within those spaces as well.
It's up to the board if they, if they-
Well, if you're going to eliminate three spaces, they should be hairpinned. That's, it should be done.
Yes, it'll be done.
Okay.
So, I'm sorry, who owns the building? Do you own the building? And so you have permission from the owner to-
Yes.
If, if the board wants to, or, you know, eventually we'll go through the, the variances that are required as part of this.
Please. I think that's a good idea.
Okay, I'm going to listen out. Maybe we'll see that at the end, because I think some pops up as part of this plan.
All right. We've got to hear those.
Yeah.
We do have to hear them. So I'd like to bring them up, so that they could write the proper testimony for the record.
Yes, please.
It's a good idea.
Mr. Chairman, we have no further witnesses at this time.
Okay.
If the board has other questions, we're happy to discuss. Otherwise, we would submit.
Yeah. I thought we had already asked that. Once again, is there anybody from the public that would like to make a comment or have a question? Thank you.
I think I have one ready.
Okay.
I started working on. I, I just wanted to clarify that the, I think it was agreed upon by the, by the traffic engineer, that the handicap space would be altered. Right now, it's oversized for what's required for a van-accessible space. I, I believe the ADA standards, as I, as I've read them, require a minimum 11-foot space, and then a minimum five-foot access aisle. Right now, they're providing 19 feet. 16 feet is really only required, and that would gain them the three feet in order to push that parking space next door to it, out of the right-of-way, at least partially out of the right-of-way. So more of it's on the site.
That'll be done here.
And then the, the two variances that I think, I think I've identified correctly would be from Chapter 35, Section 23.4A, which requires that the aisle width for a two-way 90-degree parking be 24 feet, whereas 20 feet is imposed. And I think they have to provide testimony about why that's, the C-variant testimony, essentially. And then whereas 19 spaces are required by Section 35, dash 23.2, and some traffic count that's been provided by the applicant attesting to those 19 spaces, and 16 spaces are provided, therefore, three-space deficiency. Those are the two parking variances that are required.
Anybody have any other questions now? I, I think the board at this point is able to move forward based on the change in the parking, the ADA spot, the preliminary and final site plan, the use variance and bulk variance for an X-ray technician school.
No more than four students at a time.
Well, it's, it's, it's-
That's by the state.
That's by the state. There's nothing they can do about that. Okay, at this time, I'd like to ask for an approval for Application 2019-4 for Dr. Sally Alkeme at 420 Morris Ave, Block 110, Lot 1, for the preliminary and final site plan, use variance, bulk variance, equate to, for the X-ray technician school, and for the two variances for the ADA parking space as, no.
That's a condition.
That's a condition, I'm sorry. That's a condition, I'm sorry. And then the...
Two variances for the number of parking spaces?
Yes.
And the aisle width, the minimum required aisle.
Right, right. Do we have that? Okay. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
And we have a roll call.
Mr. Polchok?
Yep.
Vice Chair Roth?
Yes.
Mr. Hockstein?
Yes.
Mr. Schnur?
Yes.
Ms. Greco?
Yes.
And Mr. Sagalow?
Yes.
And Chairman von Sacka?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Good luck to you.
Thank you very much.
Bruce, I'll talk to you about the resolution. I'll help you out.
They weren't here. All right, are we ready to move forward?
Yes, please.
Okay. Okay, our next application is twenty-nineteen dash five, Pop Realty, two-seventy-five Route twenty-two, block thirty-nine oh three, lots three, four, and five, for a preliminary and final site plan, use variance for auto leasing.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Erwin Schnitzer, representing the applicant Pop Realty in this continued case. Pursuant to the letter we received from Mr. Bergen on March twenty-first, two thousand and nineteen, I would at this time, and just to reiterate, in that letter, board members wanted to have a traffic study reflecting the parking lot usage on various days and at various times. And the board also wanted specific details on the type of air compressor that the applicant was going to use, and also some clarification on the storage and disposal of used oil and other fluids. To begin with, I'd like to call Mr. Chang back. Michael. And I believe Mr. Chang was under oath, is the last time you're still under oath, Mr. Chang. And could you give us some information concerning the type of air compressor that you intend to use at this location?
Yes. So I believe this has been passed around?
If the board please, Mr. Chang is going to be testifying from some documents. And I think the air compressor is called a Bell Air QP three-eighteen VE air compressor. And as A two, I believe, I have a handout that is basically the, a duplicate of the documents that Mr. Chang will be testifying to. So if I might... And while both handouts are being passed around, I'd just like the board to remember that this air compressor is going to be used inside a concrete building that has quiet rock surrounding the sides of the building, I believe, as per Mr. Gagliotti's testimony. Is that correct? Okay. So, Mr. Chang, would you give us some information concerning the Bell Air QP three-eighteen VE air compressor?
So yes, our staff did some research to find the quietest compressor that would suit our needs. And what we came up with as a proposal is the Bell Air Performance, Quiet Performance Series. It's actually marketed by, as you can see from the brochure, the company, that this is a compressor that is designed to be as quiet as possible. And I will just go ahead and read from the marketing materials from the company. The marketing materials state that the, this particular compressor makes less than half the noise of a standard piston compressor. The noise level, as per the company, is as low as sixty-six decibels. And basically, I think last time in the discussions, we mentioned rotary screw compressor. And as per the marketing materials, this company, they believe their compressor is, has the noise level of a rotary screw compressor. That's, you know, there's obviously some other features, but as far as noise is considered, that's...
Now, let me just ask you this. What is this compressor going to be used for in the building?
Mainly to put air in tires and to power certain power tools that will require an air compressor.
And the power, the power tools will be used to do what?
Perhaps to torque wheels and put on bolts and, you know, nuts and things of that nature. Most of, most of our, our work is done by hand. We don't rely on the compressor, air compressor, to use power tools to put these, to assemble anything. So majority of the time, it's going to be probably for air, for tires. We believe it's going to be used less than five percent of the time.
So take a normal week or a normal work day, about how many times would the compressor be used based upon your experience in the business?
So we'll say less than five percent of the time, so maybe a couple of times a day, one or two times a day.
And it's going to be used inside the space of the building, is that correct?
Inside the proposed service space specifically.
Okay. And could you tell us about the fluids? Mr. Bergen had requested, or the board had requested additional information concerning the storage and disposal of the used oil and the other fluids. Could you discuss that?
Yeah, so we anticipate keeping a minimal amount of fluids in stock as we discussed last time. We believe that's going to be somewhere near the ten quarts, which is not very much. As far as waste fluids, we have attached in the exhibit a waste container that holds about two-hundred-and-seventy-five gallons. We will be utilizing two of these containers, one of them for oil-based fluids and the other one for coolant-based fluids. And the removal of these fluids will occur probably at no more than bi-weekly basis. It will be contracted out to a professional company that does this service. The company that we've identified is called Safety Clean.
How often, how often would those fluids be disposed of off-site?
Twice, twice a month.
Okay.
And, you know, if we need to do more, we can increase that, but we don't see the need at this time.
I have no questions relating to this witness at this time, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Anybody on the board have any questions?
We took a look at the compressor. It's got a plastic box over the top of it that acts as a sound enclosure. It claims to be as quiet as a rotary screw.
Okay.
I don't, I've never seen one of these before, so...
It's not anything I'm familiar with, so, sorry, I can't...
I mean, I've never seen one with a plastic enclosure over the top of it that would melt. Yeah, do enough to quiet the compressor down. A rotary screw is known to be quieter. However, I can understand that the increased cost of a rotary screw may not be as attractive. It does have an auto drain on it. Where did you say you were going to drain that condensation into? I think we talked about this not too long ago. That may not be a question for him, obviously, but... Yep, sorry.
You're still under oath, Mr. Weimer.
Here.
You can use this.
We did testify last month that...
I'm sorry, just state your name for the record so we know who's talking.
Blaze Weimer, the Architects Alliance. We did testify last month that we do have an oil separator in the floor and that any fluids that are, you know, that would be washed down into the floor would be caught in the oil separator.
Okay. Do you know anything about these compressors?
Only what I've read, as much as I've read that you have in front of you. Again, in defense of the, I mean, we're talking about a piece of equipment. We can choose any other piece of equipment that's more suitable. We can also...
I'm not about to start, you know, I don't want to be too crazy here. I mean, it does have isolator pads on the bottom, which is good. A lot of times, these products are not sold with isolator pads, but this one clearly is. That's kind of impressive. You also did say that the building is surrounded in quiet rock, right?
Right, the building, it's an enclosed concrete building that has quiet rock around it. In addition to Mr. Chang's testimony, I have for the board's review, and you'll see in the specs, it says that it's, that's sound level DBA is sixty-six. I have a handout from the Department of Labor Occupational Safety and Health Administration, which I would like to mark as A three. And if I might hand these out.
And while I'm handing them out, if you turn the page forward, it has the decibel levels, what it's...
I think it's probably, okay. If it's got the, what is that called? Oh, quiet rock? Yeah, I think it's fine.
Okay, I just, okay, so you just see this...
Yeah, yeah. I think quiet rock's more than...
Okay.
So we can move on, the compressors?
Yes.
We can move on.
Okay.
I just want to, I just want to leave A three for Jen over here.
She says thank you.
Request of the board, and I believe the board has a handout concerning the traffic study we prepared.
Yes.
And as my next witness, I'd like to call Elizabeth Dolan of the firm of Dolan and Dean. And Ms. Dolan, you're a licensed engineer, state of New Jersey?
Yes, I am.
And when did you become so licensed?
I'm sorry, counsel, let me just swear her...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Do you swear in front of the proof?
Yes, I do.
Please state your name and address.
Elizabeth Dolan, D-O-L-A-N, Dolan and Dean Consulting, one-eighty-one West High Street in Somerville, New Jersey.
You're a licensed civil engineer, state of New Jersey?
Yes, since nineteen ninety-two.
Okay, and do you specialize in any type of engineering?
Traffic engineering for over thirty years now.
All right, and you've testified before this board, I believe, before?
Yeah, I found my notes from the two thousand twelve application I got.
I believe. I would ask the board to accept as Dolan's qualifications as an expert witness in the field of engineering and more particularly transportation engineering.
And your license is over an effect?
It's in good standing, yes.
Okay, we can, we can accept you.
Thank you.
Ms. Dolan, you were asked to provide some information relating to this application, were you not?
Yes, with regard to parking specifically.
And you're familiar with the application?
Yes, I am.
And did you provide that information?
Yes, in a letter that is dated April ten, two thousand and nineteen, which I believe the board has copies of. And it is a summary of traffic counts performed on Friday, April fifth, and Saturday, April sixth of this year.
And could you go into those counts, please?
Certainly. The purpose of the counts was to look at what's happening at the site during traditionally busiest period of retail setting. And so we isolated four-thirty to seven PM on Friday, April fifth, one-thirty PM to four PM on Saturday, April sixth, and flew a drone over the site and captured photographs approximately every half hour that are attached to the letter. And the third and fourth pages of the letter actually provide graphic summaries of those photographs showing the maximum number of occupied spaces was forty-seven, which is about fifty percent, just over fifty percent of the parking supply at the site, which consists of eighty-nine spaces. So we've got our vacant nine thousand square feet. There's another, I understand, two thousand square feet that's vacant. So we've got over sixty, sixty-six percent of the site is occupied and it's only using fifty percent of the parking. So this summary and the associated handouts indicate that there's ample parking for the nine thousand square feet, even if they weren't parking inside the building. And I think you heard testimony at the last hearing about how some of the vehicles associated with these issues will actually be in the building. We've got a low employee count, a low customer count. And so even if we were looking at a traditional four per thousand requirement for this nine thousand square feet, that would be thirty-six spaces. We have more than thirty-six spaces vacant based on the parking accumulation studies that we've performed.
I have no further questions of this witness.
Well, judging by your graphs and the pictures, there's a lot of...
A lot of parking available there, yeah.
A lot of empty spots. So I, I think that that was a major concern. And I think it's been addressed relatively well. Anybody on the board have any questions regarding the...
I just wanted to ask something. On exhibit two of the Architects Alliance drawing, there's, in the corner, I guess it would be the top left of the...
It's in your, it's in your photo too, it's the far left corner.
The far left corner, where the, where the spots are butting each other?
Oh, I'm sorry.
If, if they're using cars for display, and I don't know, do they need to put them in and out on a regular basis? Because it seems to me that they could, in that area, they could put some cars that they're not manipulating around and actually pick up some spots there to display cars and they couldn't, because if they're not bringing them in and out, they, couldn't they put them there?
I guess that's more of an operations and architecture question, but...
Is there any code reason or any issue why, if they didn't need to, to get in and out of those spots, they couldn't put some display cars in there instead?
I guess that maybe might be a lease issue, but I, from a traffic perspective, if the space is available, they could possibly put vehicles there.
Okay, so would, would actually take some of the load off the parking lot?
I believe they were going to display ten, ten cars outside, ten parking spaces. Ten cars are going to be displayed facing Route twenty-two.
Right, so I don't, you know, you understand what I'm saying, if they shifted over, because I assume that that spot is there to be able to manipulate vehicles in and out.
You're talking about the hatched area?
Yes, hatched area.
They could put some cars in that area.
Yeah, that's just, right, you could, you could store vehicles there.
That's what I mean, because he's not going to move them.
It, yeah.
If they're on display, they would actually pick up some parking.
Right, that hatched area is hatched just because if people are parked in the spaces...
So they can get in and out of them, right.
But if they don't need to move the car, and I don't know how they, if those cars have to be readily available to take in and out for...
Again, that would be an operations issue, but certainly if they put display vehicles there, that wouldn't encumber any of the parking. And all that parking is furthest from the building anyway, so it's the least, least attractive.
Do we have any problems with that?
It's not, I mean, I would only think there'd be an issue visually it was impairing someone, but it's not right...
If I may, from an operational perspective, it sounds like an excellent idea.
Okay.
Happy to take you along on that idea. Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Professionals have any questions? Is there anybody from the public that has any questions? Okay, thank you.
That's my case, Mr. Chairman, and I believe the case has proven that the proposed applicant can safely lease the nine thousand square foot in the building that's been underutilized for these last many years. And based upon the testimony, I think there's ample parking in an underutilized parking lot. And I think it would be in compliance and compatible with the existing BMW building that's located to the west of our property, and the Celebrity Motors, I think, that's located to the east. And as you know, this is a very specialized boutique type of operation, and I think it would be good for the town. And I would ask the board to approve it.
I agree with you. I, I, I think we can approve the application. Twenty-nineteen dash five, Pop Realty, two-seventy-five Route twenty-two, block thirty-nine oh three, lots three, four, and five, for preliminary and final site plan, used variance for auto leasing. Subject to the compressor that's been stipulated being used. What else?
There was other conditions from the original, from the first hearing. I, I would say what was just brought up about the display of the vehicles. Because the application did request that ten of the parking spaces be utilized for display, I didn't know if you wanted to limit that to like seven or eight, because if they use ten in addition to that hatch area, you're not really getting the benefit of what you were describing. So I don't, it's not really worked out yet, it was just presented to the applicant as an opportunity. But if you'd like to impose a condition, I think it would help for enforcement purposes to know exactly how many spaces would be needed.
Can I ask the applicant a question?
Sure.
How many cars do you think you would fit in that hatched area?
Uh...
What is it, I mean, from the picture, look at me, two or three?
That looks like...
Two? Two?
So basically, if they use the hatched area for two cars, then all they need is eight other spots.
Yeah.
Is that okay with you?
Yes.
Okay.
I think that would be worthwhile, condition to impose.
Yeah, I think, if, if it works for you, that's, okay, that's... So the, the hatched area on the right, well, from the picture I'm looking at, I thought it was the right corner, or, sorry, left corner, my other right.
It's the northwest corner.
Yeah, okay. So that will be utilized for two stationary vehicles. And then you'll go from ten slots to eight. This way, you'll still have your ten cars.
Correct.
All right, okay.
That's perfectly reasonable. I believe I asked questions, I don't know if it was imposed as a condition, about selling and stocking parts, like auto sale parts. He said that there was no, no parts being sold.
No, he, I think he testified that they, they bring them in as needed.
I mean, like, um, when people walk in, be like, I'd like a muffler or something like that. He said, no. So I'd like, I think that's a good condition. It's an auto-related use, and generally, I just think that keeping it within the confines of certain conditions are important for the resident.
Okay, so let it be stipulated that you're not a, uh, an auto parts retailer. That this is for your customers that are coming in and having their vehicle serviced, that are leasing vehicles from you. Or, I think you had said something about the mechanic also brings in high-end, uh, vehicles.
Yeah, service work with our service.
And that you're not really held out to the public. This is more of a boutique type of situation. So, somebody driving down a road with a lesser type of vehicle, and I don't wanna be discriminatory by saying anything, but you're not really open to the public to work on cars other than Porsches, Lambos, Ferrari, Mercedes, things of that nature.
Nor are they gonna wanna pay our rates, that's...
That's one way to keep them out.
Hundred seventy-five dollars an hour, you know.
Okay.
I think there was another discussion, again, I don't remember if it was a condition or not, about no parking signage in front of the bay in the rear off of Cornell Parkway. I believe that, right now, some, some aerial photos and street view photos showed cars blocking that bay.
Oh, they need to put...
And we said we need no parking signs to make sure that that's always...
Yeah, right.
Right, they're not our, those cars that park there aren't from any of our tenants. They're from, I think, maybe BMW.
Yeah, but you don't wanna have them blocking...
No, we don't want them blocking our doors, so we'll put up, uh...
Striping or signage.
We'll put up no parking, yes, we don't want those doors blocked.
All right.
And then as far as the variances that were requested, and the testimony that was provided for the D-one variance in the I-forty zone, where this use was not permitted use in the I-forty zone, and a D-three conditional use variance in the HC zone, while the building isn't actually located in that portion of the site, the applicant by testimony as far as the D-three use variance for, for not meeting all the conditions in the HC zone. And then the parking, there are no change conditions, it's a pre-existing non-conforming condition, that eighty-nine spaces are existing on-site. It was a previously granted variance. And I think that they still require the variance relief from parking because they are adding a new tenant. But they've also provided the testimony for that. They, there, there was an inclusion in their bulk table that showed that they needed a, a variance for a sign, for the area of the sign, but that's existing already. I think that testimony was provided also, and I think I provided some clarification that the sign box already exists for the tenant.
Right.
They're not expanding the sign, it's previously, previously been approved, and they're only adding the actual signage to where that, that box is. So, no, no variance is required for that. And their built, and their facade sign will comply.
Right.
That's all I have.
That's it?
Tough day.
Miss, we, we just wanna make sure that the approval is for the auto leasing, sales, and service.
Yes. Okay, now that Ms. O'Kane has given us all the information for the variances, the conditions, et cetera, is there a motion to approve the, the application?
I'll make a motion to approve.
That's Mark Cunningham, is there a second?
A second.
Daniel Poltruck, may we have roll call?
Mr. Cunningham?
Yes.
Mr. Poltruck?
Yes.
Mr. Hotstein?
Yes.
Ms. Greco?
Yes.
Vice Chair Roth?
Yes.
And Chairman Fonseca?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Good luck to you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Uh, who's this?
Now, is there, is that Porsche outside, we can all go for a ride now?
I was just gonna say, it's a white GT-three out there, right?
With Tesla came, they, they pulled a sample.
That was last time?
It was the one last time, today.
What do you got now?
Oh, it's a Butler Lexus, ISO.
Aw, come on.
We can't be exciting enough. Thank you, everyone.
Good luck.
Thank you. Cheer up.
You wanna put them out?
I was gonna, I was gonna say that actually, it's a little, what, why you in the back? Yeah. Yes, I mean, I don't understand. My goodness, that was rough. I mean, they were looking more disaster. All right, okay. Okay. Our next application is application twenty-nineteen dash six.
This was...
Which one?
Four, five.
Me too. So, I'm sorry, we have application twenty-nineteen dash five, Vanderson Afonso, one-thirty-one, Balthus Row Way, block six-oh-four, lot six. That's for a bulk variance for an addition.
How are you?
Good, how are you?
Uh, I'm the architect for the project, and Mr. Balthus Row is pulled away in an emergency. His wife and his two daughters are here, but they're not really...
That's fine.
So I'll testify on their behalf, it's okay.
If you could just raise your hand, do you swear affirm to tell the truth?
Yes, I do.
State your name and address.
Uh, my name is Salvatore Corvino, C-O-R-V-I-N-O, I'm the architect. My address is one-eleven Brookfield Avenue, Nutley, New Jersey, zero-seven-one-one-oh.
If you could just give us the benefit of your experience and training?
Uh, I've been licensed architect in New Jersey since eighty-nine. Licensed architect in New York since eighty-seven. I practice in both states. I receive reciprocity for my planner's license. However, project, will have some planning testimony, but not just architectural. And I've been practicing for, uh, in New Jersey and lived in New Jersey at that address since eighty-nine. I testified at hundreds of planning board meetings. Did have a case here last week, one of my associates came last month for another case. Anthony Catalano, he's the designer who worked with me on this project. Uh, so I have testified, we have testified in front of this board before.
Are your licenses in effect?
Yes.
Okay, we'll accept your credentials.
Thank you. Okay, so we have a project here for a second-story addition to a home on Balthus Row Way. First floor, the, by the way, the drawings here are the same drawings you have, so I don't believe we have to put them into evidence, I just have a large...
As long as you're testifying from items that were previously submitted, they don't need to be marked.
So the site is slightly, has some existing non-conforming conditions. The site area is slightly undersized, seventy-five hundred's required. We have seventy, seven thousand fifty-nine square feet. We have a lot width required to be sixty feet, we have fifty-three. The lot depth is more sufficient, a hundred required than over a hundred and thirty. Uh, we have a front yard, existing non-conforming condition of twenty, uh, twenty-four feet, seven point seventy-seven, twenty-four point seventy-seven feet at the, uh, the building line, and eighteen point seventy-seven feet at the front porch, the covered porch. Uh, the requirement is thirty, uh, so the existing front of the building is within this front yard setback. So, the addition we're adding on the second floor violates the front yard and violates the side yard by about four and a half inches, eight required, and we have just about seven foot eight. Uh, the building is quite a small footprint. Uh, this family has only a one-bedroom, uh, first-floor space, it's a one-story now. Under nine hundred square feet, plus the garage, uh, so they're looking to add space. The reason, the overhangs on the building, we have a, the second story sits over the first story, but overhangs the front and rear wall of the main structure by two feet. It's to get bedroom sizes that are comparable and necess, necessary for, uh, so they're adding three bedrooms upstairs, maintaining the bedroom downstairs, and adding another bathroom. They only have one bathroom in the house, pretty small, so we're adding another bathroom. So that's the requirement upstairs. Oh, I have four plans that show the fore and after, so our existing plan, one bedroom, with the bath, living dining area, picture, garage, one car garage.
Excuse, excuse me, Mr. Corvino, if you could use a microphone, just to make sure you're picked up on the right.
Got it? So, uh, first-floor space has, uh, is that okay? Sorry. Uh, one bedroom, kitchen, family room, living, dining space, and a small bathroom. The existing building has a height of one-story, one-and-a-half-story, uh, nineteen foot four inches. We're proposing a two-and-a-half-story, a thirty, a little over thirty-two feet. That's well within the height limits. So the proposed second floor, we'd be adding a stair going up. We'd have a, a bathroom with double sink, a master bedroom suite with walk-in closet, a laundry closet, and two additional bedrooms at the front of the space. Considering the existing hardship that that building exists where it does, uh, there's not much we can do about the front yard setback or the side yard. Although we don't impose on the front yard more than the front porch does, but the second-story wall does impose two more feet than the first-story wall, except the front porch still goes out further, so we're really having gone beyond the front porch.
Encroaching on the setback.
Uh, excuse me?
It's the covered porch that's encroaching on the setback?
The covered porch and portion of the first floor, they, you need thirty feet. We're encroaching almost six feet into that front yard with the, with the building, with the house. The front porch goes another s, five or six feet beyond that, so. The covered porch isn't being changed, we're, we're dressing it up with a better portico, but the front porch imposes, uh, only has about an eighteen point seven-seven foot setback. The enclosed house has a twenty-four point seven-seven setback, thirty is required. So the front wall of the house at the second story is a two-foot overhang. We're imposing two more feet there, but we don't go beyond the front porch, which imposes even more than the front wall of the house. The front porch, covered porch is still considered a violation of setback because it's covered, so.
So, the, the, the second story is gonna go over the existing first floor. Is there a, is there an overhang on the second floor that's encroaching as well?
The second floor itself is two feet further out than the first one.
That's two feet.
It's a two-foot overhang. Right, it's a cantilever, front and back. It's equal at both ends. And again, it's a small footprint, we're under nine hundred square feet, so to get decent-sized bedrooms, we need, we really need to do the overhang to get a footprint that's a little larger than the first floor. They do have two children, they each need a bedroom.
And then you're...
Their bedroom, and then of course, a spare one on the first floor that exists.
And then you're gonna put a covered portico in the front?
Right, there, there's already there, we're gonna be redoing the portico, so, so...
If it's already there...
There are, there are existing photos on the front sheet that show the existing conditions, so...
You see this? Yes, so they're built, I mean, those, they're intensified. So it's a pre-existing non-conforming?
It's a vertical...
Right, yeah. It's a pre-existing non-conforming?
Right.
Okay, that's, just making sure.
Just showing you the front elevation, that's the proposed elevation. So we're dressing up the front portico, uh, that's the existing garage, and we're raising it a story, and that's the front and rear, front overhang and the rear overhang at the back.
Anybody on the, on the board have any questions?
I do. Is the side yard and front yard setbacks, are they to the building or to the edge of the roof? roof?
They go to the building wall, I can finish.
Because I believe that our ordinance says that it's, the setback is to the edge of the roof.
Yeah, to the roof overhang?
Yes, so if.
Okay. Well, the number.
To make it accurate, you need to add the foot onto your numbers.
Okay.
Is the, when you're all done, everything's going to be matching?
Yes, they're going to re-size the house, so investing some money in windows and decorative trim, new siding. Right now, it's basically a little bungalow-style house.
That's who's.
Okay, you know, and it's, it's being upgraded.
Yes.
Yep, absolutely.
I would say so.
What are you, what's going to be the exterior finish? Hardy plank, vinyl siding?
I believe, we're calling it out as new siding to be selected by them, but I always like to propose they use hardy plank. I could check with the, do you know what kind of siding that you guys decided you wanted to use? Vinyl or the concrete hardy plank? Yes, I would suggest using the hardy plank, they haven't decided yet, but we've gone over a couple scenarios. It won't be aluminum, it's either going to be vinyl or hardy plank.
It's all.
I usually try to promote hardy plank, it's a little nicer.
Is it going to be the same all the way around?
All around, they're going to redo the whole house.
And the first floor is going to be finished and match the second?
Correct, yeah.
Will it be?
It'd be hard to match that if we didn't do that.
Will there be any change of the utilities?
Water, sewer, the utilities are sized properly for the second bathroom, they're minimum four-inch cast iron, one-inch, three-quarter inch water line, one-inch water line.
I'm assuming we're not going to have any issues with any drainage or anything like that, because it's the same basic footprint?
I don't have a grading plan, but it's the same.
We're not really changing any of the, anything on the ground here.
It's making the condition that it's not going to.
So, so the second story is just going to be tied into whatever the existing first-story drainage was?
Right, the additional area of the overhang is about 70 square feet, it's pretty de minimis. Part of it is over concrete patio at the rear, so it's actually less than that, 40 square feet at the front, over the 2x1 areas, over the, part of it's over the porch, part of it's like 20 by 2, so it's like 40 square feet.
It's just a direct hand you to drain it to the neighboring property.
No, it goes to the ground, there's enough room around it, there's a lot of room towards the rear. There isn't any additional drainage, per se, that's going to be impacting.
That's not a flood zone, is it?
I don't believe it is, no.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't think it is.
It would have been stated on the survey, and I don't see that on the survey.
Just checking.
Okay.
Anybody have any other questions? Do our professionals have any questions?
Are there any sidewalks in this area?
You know, I went by it this afternoon.
I think there's a sidewalk.
There could, there are sidewalks on both sides of the street.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes, there are.
There's sidewalks, there are.
I think there are. I go past it every day when I go home and I.
Typical four-foot concrete.
Put the addition of a, in the.
Are your sidewalks in pretty good shape?
Yes.
Yeah, they're, I think, I don't, you know, I didn't really take it into consideration looking at the sidewalk, so can't recall.
And if it's altered during construction, that'd be.
Right, right. And again, the existing walk leading to the sidewalk is in good shape, so. And if there's any, you know, if that's something you want to make a condition that the inspector, if we have to repair a crack or anything, we don't have a problem doing that, I'm sure.
Is the house going to have central air?
Yes.
Is there, it didn't look like there was anything that showed where the compressor would be outside.
Well, we're going to put it on the back patio, and it's more than sufficient, it's going to be at the rear of the house.
Okay.
I didn't do a set of working drawing jet, I was waiting for this approval.
It won't be in the side yard.
It won't be in the side yard.
It's in the back, it's fine.
Not allowed to put it on the side yard, so it'll probably be near that back entrance step, adjacent to the garage, or behind the garage, so more than likely behind the house, next to the garage.
That's, that's not an issue.
And again, that's going to be a code requirement, code official would control that, so.
I have two questions.
Sure, please.
Just to clarify, the setback in the front that you're requesting the variance for, the existing stoop isn't covered, so you're adding a coverage to that stoop, and therefore that's what the encroachment is?
Correct.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify.
Well.
Because I looked at the elevations on PL 2.2, and there's no, no coverage over the stoop.
Right, so we're trying to dress up the entrance, give it in, because there is no protection when you come in, so we're putting a new portico cover.
It's not the building, it doesn't exist, it's the actual cover, it's the cover over the stoop.
The patio is the.
It's going six feet further, so it's on full building face.
Yeah, the landing is there, the step-up landing is there, but the cover is going to be new.
I just wanted to clarify that, to make sure.
Yeah.
And then your zone table on PL 1.1, I don't believe you testified that the side yards are changing in any way, they're going to exist as they do today?
They do, but the one side yard, the three-foot nine is on the garage side, we're not going anywhere near that.
Yes.
On the left side, the side yard is 7.62, and eight is required, the house is going to align, the wall of the house is going to align that, so that addition would also be a side yard variance.
But we're.
It's not changing it, though.
We're not changing it.
So it's not.
Follow the same line.
Yes, they are.
Yes, we are.
The overhang is going.
The overhang has to be shown, it's going to be a foot.
It's not the overhang, we're talking about the side yard. We're aligning it with the wall that's already over by four and a half inches.
Right.
So I didn't know if that was an expansion of the.
Sorry, your, is your roof, what we discussed before, is the roof edge going to still be 7.62 feet from the edge?
No.
No, not according.
It's going to be a foot more, so it is impacting, it is impacting setbacks.
Okay.
By a foot.
My apologies, yes, the roof overhang on the side will be a foot, whereas right now they're.
It's pretty flat, it's pretty flush.
Pretty flat, so the new roof design will, having understood now.
What you have to.
So there will be a one-foot expansion on that side.
Right now, the zone table says no change right now, so I just wanted to clarify off the.
Right, it didn't include the roof, so.
That has to change.
Yes.
Well, we'll update that and correct.
So it's really only supposed to be like 6.6 or so.
Right, it'd be a foot more.
Your side yard on the left.
And then even the front yard overhang would be another foot more.
Right.
So I'll adjust those, those numbers.
Okay, so just the front yard and side yard, I just wanted to clarify that.
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions here? Is there anybody from the public that would like to come up and be heard?
Yep.
Anybody?
Okay. We're all good? Okay. I'd like to ask for a motion to approve application 2019-5 Vanderson Afonso, at 131 Baltis Row Way, Block 604, Lot 6, that's for a bulk variance addition. The plans are going to be amended to show the setbacks actually becoming smaller.
Look at the roof.
If there's any damage that's done to the sidewalks, that'll all be corrected at the end of the construction phase. What else? So that's basically it, right?
The material is.
You can say the facade.
Yeah, the house, it's going to be in the back. The material will be the same throughout the exterior, so there won't be any hodgepodge, anything like that. Is there a motion to approve?
I'd like a motion to approve.
Is there a second? That's Mr. Schner?
I'll second.
Mr. Cunningham, may we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Schner?
Yes.
Mr. Cunningham?
Yes.
Mr. Hoxton?
Yes.
Mr. Poltruck?
Yes.
Ms. Greco?
Yes.
Vice Chair Ross?
Yes.
Chairman Fonseca?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Terrific, lots of luck to you.
Good luck.
At this time, I'd like to ask for a motion to adjourn.
It's not moved.
All in favor?
Hi.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep. Wow. Are we done?
Wait a minute. Turn the quarter off, please.